It's five o'clock, August 23rd. I guess we'll go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting to order. If we could have the roll call, please.
Jake Castile, here. Jim Jackson?
Here.
Pete McGory?
Here.
David Miller? Steve Pajali?
Here.
Connor Whalen? Mike Zuloff?
Here.
Okay. I'm informed we do have a quorum with the people that are here. So moving to the, on the next item of business on our agenda, it's approval of the minutes from the July 26, 2023, meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes as submitted? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Minutes have been approved. Next item of business is a public hearing for property located at 123 Division Street. It's a zone map amendment. The applicant is Dr. John Davenport. The application for an amendment to the zoning map for 123 Division Street, I won't read the parcel number. Application is to amend the zoning map from public facilities to local business and residential to family. And it's actually one parcel but with, or one, one piece of real estate with two separate parcels, as I understand it. I would ask staff to explain the application for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site being addressed on this application is Zon PF Public Facilities. The proposed zoning is going to be split up in two different pieces here, and I'm going to mention throughout the presentation is parcel one being the orange on your screen and then parcel two being the light blue color on the screen. The adjacent zoning of this site is, to the north, R2F Two Family Residential and also CS Commercial Services. To the east is R2F Two Family Residential. To the south is R2F Two Family Residential and to the west is CS Commercial Services. The existing use of this site is both residential and business. The proposed use is staying as it currently is in residential and business. The existing parcel of 123 Division Street currently has both a residential structure and an old church that is now being used for a business. The applicant is proposing to split the parcel at 123 East Division Street. They want to plan to create two lots, one for the existing residential structure, which is referenced as parcel one, and then one for the structure currently housing the Halo Live venue is parcel two. As part of this proposal, the applicant is proposing to rezone both the proposed parcels one and parcel two. Parcel one is proposed to be rezoned to R2F Two Family Residential. Parcel two is proposed to be rezoned as LB Local Business. Both zoning categories more appropriately reflect the existing uses of the structures on the site. On parcel one, the housing structure is used as a residential home, which was originally an accessory use to the previous church. What was once the church of the corner, on the corner of Division Street and Wayne Street, is a mixed-use site comprising of both a recording studio and a venue. The rezoning application for the zone app amendments were evaluated based on current and desired land uses of the applicant and the broader perspective of whether the zoning change makes sense for the expected future land use of the site and also the surrounding parcels. The interpretation of staff for parcel one is that the existing parcel is adjacent to multiple R2F zoning districts, both northeast and south. Staff understands the house is currently a one-unit structure, and staff has determined that expanding to the R2F Two Family use to parcel one is appropriate and would be harmonious to the surrounding two-family uses and zoning categories. Parcel two, the rezoning to local business, is the minimum zoning intervention to get to the current land use in conformity with the zoning district. LB districts are commonly on corner properties throughout the city with neighboring residential properties. The LB Local Business District is designed to provide and supply nearby neighborhoods' needs. So typically, a lot of corner stores or dry cleaners, et cetera, is what the code specifically calls out, is appropriate in this zoning district. Because of this objective, the LB Local Business zoning districts are appropriate, is appropriate for this site, excuse me, and is currently functioning as a local business and neighborhood destination at this location. Staff also reviewed the comprehensive bicentennial plan and has determined that one top priority of the comprehensive plan would be met with this proposal, and that is a livable city. That is to preserve intact housing stock and maintain quality of life in the neighborhood. Staff examined further the city's bicentennial comprehensive plans that relates to this area and suggests this zoning could offer great potential towards developing human capital, preserve existing historic buildings, and help shape Sandusky as a destination city. The rezoning of this parcel will enable the independent ownership of either structure and will bring the existing land uses closer to conformity with the zoning. Other city departments had no objections to this request. Staff recommends approval to the proposed amendment of the zoning map at 123 Division Street with the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits must be obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency prior to any type of rezone to this parcel. And also, the second condition is that the new zoning districts align, meets and bounds with the newly proposed parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
I'll add just a couple comments. Just for clarity, I wanted to just repeat that this is currently, it is one parcel. It's also going through a lot split process. So the rezoning is to, that's why it's split into two recommendations for two different zoning categories. Those will follow the expected lot lines of that lot split. And it's really just bringing the existing land uses into compliance with a zoning so they would be conforming uses. The uses aren't expected to change on the site.
That was going to be my question. If I was looking at the current deed, I think it's actually listed as two separate parcels already. Is part of that going to get shaved off from one to the other?
No, I think what she's saying, Mr. Chairman, is that we're dealing with two parcels, and since one is not, well...
If you don't mind, will you flip to the one where it shows it's split? So this diagram, more accurately, it should say Proposed Parcel One and Proposed Parcel Two. The entire property right now is a single parcel. It was built as a church with a parish house on it on a single parcel. So the owner wants to split it so they could each be owned individually in the future.
That can be done, I mean, there's parcel one and parcel two. Yeah, I don't think it requires a lot split unless you want to shave off some of parcel two and add it to parcel one.
It does not require a lot split. They would like to split it so that the house can be on one parcel and the business can be on one parcel.
Does, like, one of the buildings already have a footprint on both parcels?
There's only one parcel in existence today. It's, they're both on the same parcel.
I'm looking at the deed that was with the application. It's got parcel one and parcel two.
That's the proposed lot split that they're going through right now.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, so that's not the existing deed?
Correct.
Because it says old legal, so...
Yeah, the existing is a single parcel. They're going through the lot split process right now, and this is concurrent.
Okay. So would it be appropriate if this were to be recommended by this commission subject to the lot split?
We don't need to do it subject to the lot split. You can actually zone just a portion of a parcel. So we could, we could zone the house two-family and the business, local business, without a lot split, but the...
Land ends up going with it, but by meets and bounds description.
Right. The recommendation with it, staff includes that the new zoning districts align with that lot split. Since they are pursuing a lot split, we'd recommend that the zoning align with the new parcels.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add to Ms. Blair's comments. The only reason staff is requesting that be a condition is it's just a cleaner practice. It's not legally required, but for future land transactions, it would be cleaner.
Well, I do, I agree that you would need, if you're going to have a new zoning, that you're going to need to see where it ends and where the next zoning starts. So I think that's appropriate, what staff is proposing here.
Well, they're both going to be the same zoning when we're done, right?
No.
The proposed would be that the house gets zoned two-family to become aligned with the other two-family districts and that the business being zoned two-family has shown on that slide.
So, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Zuloff, the screen on your left now, that's what it's currently zoned. It's PF Public Facilities, which is green, and then the representation of the proposed lot split would be accurate.
I misread the report then. All right, now I understand. Makes more sense now. So there, yeah, okay. Let me guess that residential structure was a rectory at one time, maybe?
So it's my understanding that the existing house on the one parcel with the church was a parish house that was an accessory use to the church, which is legal as an accessory use.
Yeah, okay. Now it's coming together for me. Thanks. How about you? Coming together for you?
Yes. I just, what confused me, I thought it was already parcel one and parcel two from looking at what was submitted. But any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here? The applicant want to say anything? Not the applicant or don't want to say anything?
Not the applicant.
Okay.
Well, it's a public hearing. He's probably here to...
All right. Is anybody else here that wants to comment on this as a public hearing? Apparently not. Would any, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna...
Anybody care to make a motion on this application?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. So moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? And this is per, I presume, per the staff recommendation, subject to the actual lot split with the meets and bounds description and any necessary permits from the various departments?
As described.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? If, Ms. Rambo, if you could call the roll, please.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Jake Castile?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes. It's unanimous, so the application has been approved. And I guess unless there's some reason not to, we'll move on to the next item of business. New business. Logan Meesler, Meisler, however you, that should be pronounced, on behalf of Toph Dairy Company, has submitted a site plan for 3717 Venice Road to build a cold storage building in a limited manufacturing district. I would ask staff to educate us on that application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The existing zoning of this site is LM Limited Manufacturing. The surrounding zoning to the north is both general manufacturing and limited manufacturing. To the east is limited manufacturing. To the south are both general manufacturing and public facilities, and to the west is limited manufacturing. The surrounding uses of the site are residential, commercial, and manufacturing. The existing use of this site is manufacturing and storage. Proposed use is staying the same with manufacturing and storage. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 20,700-square-foot freezer and then convert the existing 10,269-square-foot freezer to dry storage. Part of this project is also to widen Venice Road's curb cut for the commercial vehicle traffic entry and construction of new loading docks. The loading docks will be used during daylight hours only. The freezer of this proposal will be used 24/7, 365 days a year. This addition will put the total site coverage to approximately 23%, which is 27% under the maximum requirement of 50%. The proposed height of the expansion is 23 feet. The site contains 80-plus parking spaces. The code calls for 105 spaces. The parking area coverage is 52,000 square feet, and the landscaping coverage is 2,200 square feet. Staff has talked to the applicant and has determined that the 80-plus parking spaces will adequately meet the parking need for the site. The applicant stated to staff that 80-plus parking spaces will be more than enough for current and future employees slash customers. Staff notes that warehousing operators typically produce a minimal amount of jobs nor increase customer traffic demand, therefore should not require the amount of parking the code calls for. Due to the lack of demand, staff recommends waiving any additional parking requirements for this site. All landscaping requirements are met. All yard area and height requirements are met. This is a permitted use for this site. That being said, there were no objections from any other department within the city. Engineering staff made a comment that they look forward to future plan reviews with the applicant. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan at 3717 Venice Road with the following conditions, that all applicable permits must be obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency prior to construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Any questions for staff? Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant that would care to? Nothing more to...
I'll answer questions if you have any.
My question is, have you brought ice cream cones for...
Oh, good. Solicite a bribe. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Do you wish to add anything to what's been said? You don't need to.
We are indicating seven additional spots on the Edgewater Avenue because at some point, he said they may hire additional people. So we're showing them provisionally, so we...
Okay. Why don't you come up to the microphone and just state your name and...
Seth Ernstine. I'm with Fight Contractors. Again, at the lower right hand, we are indicating where seven additional parking spaces could go in the future if they needed to hire additional staff. We have it taken care of, but we are asking not to have to build it now until that need presents itself.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
My question is, so there could be 87 spaces instead of the 80 that are identified? Parking spaces?
Yes, but not, not until the future. We're showing it that if the need...
Potentially.
Yes. If it arises, we can cover it. So we'd like to get preapproval, if you will, that where we have them located is fine.
Okay. Staff have any comment on that?
Mr. Zuloff?
Yeah, I would only comment that that's been our practice is to, provided there is, it remains feasible to add parking in the future per the standard, should a later occupant or business or conditions change that require additional parking, we are, have been pretty consistent in our practice of waiving the parking standards as we should.
I have a question for staff. So based on the application as it exists, does that include those eight extra, the application right now, include those eight extra?
Per the application, no. Now, that being said, I think the board would have the interpretive power to add that as part of this proposal.
I do have a question for the applicant, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff, go ahead.
I was having a little trouble with the resolution on the, on the site plan. How will the additional runoff from the roof impact runoff from the site, or is there some means for detention of that additional?
No detention. Simply taking the far west side.
Yeah.
That wraps around, and we're connecting to the existing.
Connecting the existing what?
Storm that runs back towards the train ditch.
Okay, so it's going to the ditch?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
I'm slightly concerned that we, so we, I need to get back to the report here. Sorry. Give me a half a second, would you? Before you... Did you, what did you hear back from engineering?
So engineering said they had no objections to the request, and they would like, they look forward to reviewing additional plans. I don't recall if storm was part of this process so far, so I'm not quite sure if engineering has any review on storm water management, but it was part of their commentary that they would like to see storm water.
I couldn't find their comments because I hadn't read them, but it says, Engineering Department has no objections and looks forward to detailed plans, including civil plans, water, sewer, storm, drainage connections, concerns about runoff into neighboring properties, sewer connections, signage plan, and stormwater pollution prevention plan. So assuming that all that has to pass muster in, at our engineering department, I would be in favor of approving this plan.
Is that a motion, Mr. Zuloff?
If you want to be, I move that we approve this application subject to the engineering staff comments.
Do you want to make reference to those potential additional eight parking spaces?
I don't know. I don't find that necessary. If someone wants to, that's fine, but someone would just say I second it.
I second that motion.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Rambo, if you'd call the roll, please.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Jake Castile?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Which is for clarity, that was a motion that's been approved subject to the staff recommendations, all the staff recommendations.
Yeah. I did, I did say, I did make reference to the engineering comments, as I said. Yeah, you're right.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next item of business, under other business, general business district zoning amendment recommendation. There's a recommendation or discussion of recommendation to amend general business to allow multifamily residential as a main use. Ms. Blair, I think you're going to talk about that?
Yes, thank you so much. So I'm bringing forward today a recommendation to initiate a change in the general business zoning district. And really, this is coming from the findings of the Fireland Region Housing Needs Assessment. So we've been hearing from the community for quite some time about not having enough housing options, housing units in the city and even in a broader region. And this 2023 study that was conducted by Bowen National Research and led by Firelands Forward found that our three-county region, Ottawa, Erie, and Huron County, are more than 10,000 housing units short of a healthy housing supply. And it suggests that Erie County alone is in need of 1,637 additional rental housing units and 2,734 additional for-sale housing units within the next five years for us to have a healthy housing market. And what that means is if somebody wants to move, they can find a place. If somebody wants to, their family is growing, they can find a larger place. If their family has shrunk, they can find a smaller place. Right now, we have almost no available inventory in the city to accommodate that, and so we're finding housing shortages on, at all affordability levels.
Excuse me, Ms. Blair. The sound is a bit of a problem. I didn't hear those numbers. I wonder if you could repeat the numbers again?
Sure. So Erie County was found to have 1,637 rental unit housing gap and 2,734 for-sale housing unit gap. So we need almost more than 4,000 units to have a healthy housing market in Erie County.
In the county.
Yeah. And Sandusky has a demand for this housing because we have jobs here, we have amenities here, it's walkable, people like to live in the city, and we have almost nothing available. We also don't have a whole lot of land area available. So thinking in that solving this and making any measurable movement on getting more units to our city is going to take collaborative, multi-public-private partnership, a lot of brains, a lot of creative thinking, and a lot of strategy to make any, any sort of dent in this. So today, I'm proposing a recommendation to the Planning Commission that we amend our general business district zoning category to allow multifamily residential as a main use. So that would allow apartment buildings or mixed-use projects that had residential and commercial components in our general business districts. Right now, the only business district that will allow multifamily residential is downtown business. So this could allow more mixed-use, walkable-type products in other areas to allow other development to happen in other areas of the city other than downtown. So if you remember when we brought you the students' study on the climate refugee plan, and they think people are going to want to move here, and they took a look at the Sandusky Plaza, for example, they thought a redevelopment there that made sense was a mixed-use product, so commercial on the ground floor and apartment units above or for-sale condos above. Right now, we could not do that redevelopment because our zoning wouldn't allow it. So this, that's just one example of what this would allow. If you take a look at where the general business is in the city, it's concentrated primarily along our corridors, and corridors tend to be the best places for multifamily because they have the most access to transit. So if you take a look, I isolated where general business is in the city. It is primarily concentrated along Tiffenav, West Washington Street, Perkins Avenue, and Cleveland Road. So this is the land area that could be open to new multifamily construction projects if we made this zoning amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
Well, I can appreciate, I very much appreciate the initiative staff is making here, and I think it's a super idea. I was talking to Commissioner, anyway, outside conversations don't much matter, but I was talking to Dave Miller, and he seemed to be delighted at the idea, too. So I agree that we need a lot of housing. I mentioned last year that we should target creating 2,000 units and maybe settle for 1,000 in Sandusky. And people look at me like I have two heads until they think about it for a while and realize that there's a market for it and available housing that I see, even if, gets snapped up quicker than people think. So I like it. The only comment I'd make is if you're, I think you need to say multifamily residential and then make reference to the code so that we know, we got to define the term, because, you know, we have multifamily residential in the code, so I would say multifamily residential per, and then cite the section.
So one thing I'll mention to that comment is that in the business districts already, there's Section 1133.10, Area Regulations Business Districts. It says that any, that the lot area requirements established for multifamily districts by this zoning code shall apply to the buildings used exclusively for dwelling purposes. So our business district section already points to our multifamily regulations for any building that's residential use only. If it's a mixed-use building, it would apply, commercial building standards would apply. So this shouldn't cause any, like, I've scoured in lots of directions to make sure it wouldn't cause any conflict. We have a clear definition of multifamily residential and what the setbacks and all of the requirements would be if we added this as a main use.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
I have a question. Your foresight, how do you see this working? Do you see this utilizing the space that is available for residencies, or do you see, like you were talking about the Sandusky Plaza, individuals adding on to these commercial buildings to allow living space?
It's a great question. So one thing, when you think about like 20-year looking-forward land use planning, corridors tend to be places where redevelopment happens. You get, once a building hits 30, 40, 50 years old, a lot of times, it needs to come down. Thankfully, buildings that are built in, you know, early 1800s, like 1800s, like downtown buildings, they can last several hundred years, but most buildings that were built in 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s were not built to last that long. So they hit their 30-year arc. That landowner is starting to think, do I tear this building down? Do I put a new... Do I put a new use in it? You know, what, what do I do with this property? So properties will turn over and people will be making those decisions. This gives them more options. So maybe there is something that was an office building that's a couple stories, maybe they think, could we transform this into a mixed-use building? Maybe it could be 10 units plus a storefront, you know? So it just opens up the options for landowners to decide what to do with their land.
There's a lot of vacant storefronts running around here, too, that, that may be able to help out, somebody be able to live inside. Okay, that's, that was my question.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zulov?
So Ms. Blair introduces an important point about reuse and the life cycle of buildings, but we're so clueless. You know, the McDonald's in Amsterdam, in the center of Amsterdam, is in a 600-year-old building, right? And we think a building's old when it's 40 years old. And we think we gotta tear down a school and build a new one because it's old. When, if you can't teach kids in an old building, somebody should notify Oxford University. Hundreds of years old. And so, so yeah, we should be, when we do these things, we're supposed to be, this body is supposed to be thinking long-term and, and what, what, what the, you know, we should be looking out hundreds of years, even as we look out 10 years or five years. Can't ignore the near term, but we certainly have to consider the long term. So I was thinking more about adding structures to, but adaptive reuse makes sense, too. And I was worried about, what do you mean by multifamily? We're referring to the definition of multifamily, and I might be wrong about that. Because now you're introducing, for example, had the Fike Building, which is downtown, been in a commercial district, or in a general business district, and that was arguably the use it was being put to. We would not, we would, we would not have permitted or without a variance or something or rezoning, we would not have permitted the residential units that are going in there today. Fortunately, it was in the downtown, and downtown business does explicitly allow residential use in upper stories. So this outlaw, you know, this, this, and maybe we should make the code consistent with the downtown business and allow, what, be consistent in our, our code and compare this to whatever's in downtown business. But in, in any event, I'm, I'm a go.
To add in what you said about the McDonald's building, my wife likes to watch this show about real estate being sold in England. And over there, it's a little bit different because the buildings aren't 100 years old, they're 300 and 200 years old. And I'm saying, well, why are these buildings still standing there? Well, guess what? The, the zonings in these cities will not allow them to tear those buildings down. They have to do something with them. And that's why there's so many old buildings still left over there in England, because they've been forced to revamp them to a different purpose. That's all I had to say.
So is staff looking for a motion to go forward with this, or?
If Plans Commission is comfortable, I would recommend that you make a motion to amend the general business zoning district to include multifamily residential as a permitted main use. And if, if you make that recommendation today, it would go to City Commission, there would be a public hearing about it, it would follow any other zoning amendment process.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pajali?
I've got a question for Ms. Blair. Is there a downside to doing this? Is, is there any downside that you could see where, I mean, if there's a variety of uses that could be done? If we change it, would, is there anything else that could sneak in in those areas when we really wanted residential? If we don't get residential, could we get something else that might not be as favorable?
One thing I would say is sometimes change makes people uncomfortable, so we could get some pushback there. Or if a new project is proposed in a neighborhood and, or on a corridor, and there's neighbors next door, and they're not comfortable with it. But that happens with any kind of development. I've had a question, a couple of questions come up about transient rental. So allowing multifamily and general business could allow somebody to come in and build 10, you know, an apartment building and transient rented, which if they wanna spend, you know, millions of dollars to build new units in the, in the city, I would say that we need new units. We have demand for lots of different demand, and that's already some, a use that's allowed in general business. So I don't really see that as a huge concern. Really, we have very limited land area to offer more people places to live, and people are experiencing an incredible housing shortage, so I don't see a lot of downsides from, from this. As long as we get good quality development and, and units, which our building code and our zoning code should help shepherd that, get good outcomes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm glad you brought that up. So you're, you're saying, just for my clarification, that the transient units could go in there in general business as it stands right now?
Correct. General business is among the other commercial areas that where transient rentals currently permitted.
So that would not add transient rental to that? That already exists?
It already exists, yes.
And one other-
Why would transient rental exist but not long-term residential?
So my understanding, when the transient rental updates were created, it was thinking about the use transient rental. Where is this appropriate? That, it's, it's more of a commercial use. So that's where they started. Let's, let's permit it in commercial areas, and then we'll have a much more robust conversation about whether we ever let it allowed in residential areas. Similarly, in the 70s and 50s, 50s and 70s, when Euclidian zoning, which is this type of zoning, really came up, it was about segregating land uses. It was about saying commercials should not exist in the same place as residential. So the code has a bias towards keeping residential and commercial away from each other. Whereas what we know now about how people actually enjoy to live is we like to live close to stores and gyms and childcare centers, and we actually prefer mixed-use projects, and so this change would enable mixed-use projects.
Well, there's an important difference today, Mr. Chairman. A, a lot of zoning is about managing conflicts and protecting people's property rights by managing conflicting uses and, and impositions by one use on another property. Environmental regulations have made a huge difference since we invented this kind of zoning, you know? There was a time where you just didn't wanna live anywhere near any kind of manufacturing anyway, so to protect people, they wanted to know that they were in a residential zone so that, so that some manufacturer couldn't open next to them because it was always an imposition on their, or, or usually. It's a little different today, and we're, and we're not talking about introducing multifamily residential into a, a manufacturing district. We're talking about general business here, right? So, so what we're doing is we're removing a barrier that was necessary in the past that is less necessary today. That's how I would view this.
I might add, it seems to me that you're simply allowing people to live where they're comfortable living. It's really allowing a less restrictive use in a more, in a more restricted area. I'm sorry, in, allowing a more restrictive use in a less restricted area. I mean, business, resident, moving, instead of moving, you're not moving business into residences, you're moving residences into building, or business. So I, I don't see, I, I think it's happening anyway, and that's just what's going on. And so I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Pajali asks, is there a downside? And this, when I support this, it's not without trepidations. One of the problems is we have to enforce decent housing standards. We have to enforce housing codes. We've struggled with that, and, you know, this kind of opens the door to some really bad housing, too, if we allow it. But I, I'm gonna be optimistic about it and hope that it, that this is gonna do more good than harm.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Far be it from me to question the study, but sometimes I wonder about the, the numbers. It seems to me that it's more of a affordability problem. I think in that study, they identified affordability at 300,000 and below is affordable. And to me, that, that doesn't seem very affordable.
That's Sandusky?
And sometimes I wonder about the absorption rate. You know, this county is losing population or flatlining at best. Can we absorb a lot of other units? I mean, it's just kinda like we're playing a shell game and shifting people around. We've got Fike coming online. We've got the Marouse development. We've got Redwood out on Perkins Ave with 140 units. We've got Kafaro building units. And I see Mr. Zulov is just kind of thinking I'm crazy with my, with my comments here. But sometimes I wonder if we can get into a position where we're overbuilt just because of study. I don't think they factored in birth or death rates in that study. I mean, we've got an older population that's gonna be dying off, and that's gonna create more and more housing in those houses. So I just, I, I have no problem with, with this proposal. I applaud the fact that the planning people are being creative. I just wanna think about all the ramifications of what could be.
You will have that opportunity on the City Commission.
I know.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that I think, I think the Commissioner is right. He's absolutely correct. It raises questions of how much can the, the market absorb, but, you know, in, in our system of free markets. Now, we also would agree that it's not the government's job to decide how many housing units should be allowed. It's the, it's the investors should decide whether, whether the market will support an additional housing unit or not. I'm sure the Commissioner would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, but-
I totally agree with you.
But the other thing I would suggest is that I think all the money is probably going to the high-end housing right now. And that's why nobody's building the more affordable units, because there's not enough subsidy and things like that to get the developers to come in and build. And I think that things have to be changed at the state and maybe the federal level to create some more subsidy to make those types of projects become available.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman, for Ms. Blair. I'm to understand that rezoning, we still would have to approve these individual site plan applications, or we would not. So if we, so we follow normal site plan process?
So yeah, per, you know, Mr. Pajali's point, we would be able to, or some group would sit and look at the plan and make sure it was feasible before we just started building stuff. So we could go back and reassess if we have too many units or not enough. This is just saying we can have that conversation moving forward, not necessarily that it's gonna just guarantee anybody who wants to build multifamily residential property or spaces in the general business district would be approved. We could just start having that conversation. It would allow for that.
It would be an allowable land use, so they'd still have to go through the site planning process.
Without having to do rezoning.
They'd have to meet the setbacks and the height requirements.
So we could still look at each individual case and determine, is this something that's gonna be useful, feasible, needed? Or is it gonna be just, you know, crowding, just adding more units, but not really taking care of the housing problem? Because I agree with you. I think it is largely affordability as well, because there are a lot of good expensive units that, you know, a lot of people I know can't afford to live in. So there's properties open, just like you can go buy a house for $500,000, but you really can't go rent a three-bedroom for $800 anymore. I know. I, I rent. My rent was just raised $400. So just, that's my point there. But I support this, so I would, I would vote yes for this. If we're ready.
Anybody care to make a motion on the proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend to the City Commission this change to the zoning-
Which is to allow multifamily residential as a main use in general business district?
As, as, yeah, the, the change presented to us here.
I do have one more question. I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman. It's not that important. I just wanna make sure I understand correctly. This example, this here, this was the proposed, what it would look like, not the existing. That's why you highlighted.
Yeah, and it was supposed to show up red in your pocket, but it didn't. I apologize.
Okay. That's, yeah, I figured, I seen it highlighted on here, and it wasn't included, so I assumed, but I just wanted the record to be clear.
She had a question, though.
Well, I know, but-
Did I mess up the protocol? I apologize.
There was a motion, so you can't, you-
Oh, I can't talk, I can't ask anymore.
Without a discussion, we shouldn't.
Sorry, it was a clerical clarification.
Second.
Okay, now, any, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Okay, hearing none, I would ask the roll be called on that motion?
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Mike Zulov?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Jake Castile?
Yes.
It's unanimous, so recommendation to the City Commission. Any other items of business to be brought up at this meeting? Hearing none, I'm gonna move myself that we adjourn this meeting at whatever time it is, about 12 minutes to six.
I'll call it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?